Okay, seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the December 19th, 2023 meeting of the planning board. We only have one gen night in today, MDM variety, three fair crossway site plan for constructing an antique firehouse. It's part of the existing antique museum village, the fairgrounds. So you can come closer and like sit there and pass stuff down. We should have had a table here.
So it's my understanding, did you get to see the project already?
Yeah.
To some extent?
Yeah, Jeff has it, I believe. We can bring it up right here.
There you go. So basically, folks, what we're doing here is in addition to our museum village to complement the schoolhouse and the train station. And while we moved those two existing buildings onto the fairgrounds, I didn't look too hard for an antique firehouse somewhere to move because it's a lot of work. So we decided to construct one with new construction, but we searched far and wide for the history of firehouses and what they look like in a day. And we came up with this design, and it's been ongoing for a couple of years. And the firefighting museum at Duchess County approached us about doing this because they have all kinds of antique firefighting apparatus from Duchess County and a bevy of volunteer firemen who are willing to man the exhibit during the fair and talk to people like we do at the train station and the schoolhouse. So we came up with a plan. It's not really aggressive, but there is enough antique firefighting apparatus mothballed around Duchess County that we could put stuff in this museum for probably 20 years in a row and not duplicate it. They've got so much stuff, and they've got no place to show it off. So we thought, what better place than us for six days every year? And off-season as well, like Sheep and Wool, we would probably have it open, and maybe even the car show, to have the antiques on display and have people get to see them. So it is a 25 by 40 building. The tower is, I learned something in this process, they used to drive fire hose by hanging it in the tower. I'm not old enough to understand that, but I brushed up on it. So that was part of that. It's a very modest building. It'll have pine siding because, of course, I said to the boys when we were discussing this, I'd really like to have this maintenance free because I got enough things to take care of. But ultimately, it doesn't fit the era if we do something that is hardy or something else. So we're going with the pine clapboard siding and some cedar-shaped fish scales to give it that look. It's very simple. It'll be finished inside with tongue-grooved pine because we didn't want to have exposed studs. And that's the extent of it. It'll be finished, there'll be basic lighting in it because truthfully, it's open daytime hours only. There's no water in it. It'll have electric only. It won't be insulated. And that's kind of the scheme of it. We think it'll be a great addition. And from the site map I sent you, you can see it's down behind the train station on that sidewalk that we put in that loops the museum building and the blacksmith shop up the hill to the schoolhouse and the train station.
I thought the tower was going to basically have a pole if you could slide down. That would be nice.
Somebody mentioned it, but it's not exactly what it was for.
Everybody on the board have questions?
Have you seen where the existing set rec time over there?
Is here?
No, down.
Down.
Now up.
Right here. Right here.
Oh, okay. Here's the fire.
Yeah, so the sidewalk will go right out to the sidewalk stair.
Right.
And where's the schoolhouse and the train?
Train station, schoolhouse.
Train station, schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Firehouse.
It's got plenty of roof to expand your village.
Yeah, and you know, they think all the time, what makes sense? What would have been? What would people have done in the late 1800s, early 1900s? They talked about a general store at one point that we could obviously use to sell fair souvenirs out of or whatever. But I don't think, currently, there's nothing burning a hole in anybody's brain about what would be next. You know, this kind of fell in our lap. They came to us, the firefighters, and wanted a permanent museum on our grounds and access year-round. But it was 70,000 square feet, and I said, I can't afford to give up that kind of space. They have that much stuff stored.
Should be like a rotate every year, you would change the exhibit.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. Pocahontas obviously would be a mainstay at this because she is from Reinbeck, and we store her for the winter. So fair week, that is one thing that I asked, that she be part of every display. And there's talk of rotating fire departments daily. So in other words, Reinbeck might have volunteers there one day to talk to people, the next day it might be Hyde Park, it might be Stamford Village. So that part is all up to them. But they've got plenty of volunteers, which are a problem in some days. The schoolhouse and the train station, we find trouble finding volunteers to staff those kinds of things because people don't have interest in those things. At least that's what we're finding. But the firefighting museum would be a totally different ballgame because there's volunteers always for that. And there's been a lot of interest for it. So we're excited to add it.
A complete firefighting museum, permanent one, that people could access all year would be a good thing for the village if somebody could find 70,000 square feet.
It was quite a massive building when they showed it to me in a render room. And I said, you know, they're looking for five, six acres of land. I can't afford to give that up. So they're actively looking, and I said to them, look, maybe this is a way for you guys to spread the word and have people see it, and maybe something else falls into place and you get your museum somewhere else in the county. And then you could still come here for six days every year because where else are you going to get access to that many people in that short a time to tell your story? It seems like a win-win. I think our fair patrons will thoroughly enjoy it like they do the train station and the schoolhouse. And it still goes to the history of our county and volunteerism, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what I got.
Questions?
You want to talk alternative siding?
Well, I think the fine sounds just right. It shakes. It could be a good addition. I love the concept.
You know, we went to libraries and got books and saw what they had. Some guys, somebody had an actual picture of the Stamford Village warehouse from back in the day, which was a two-story, believe it or not. We didn't want to go there, so we just got storage of ours. It'll be an attic truss up here so we can store some things for them permanently, small stuff. But I thought the host tower was really neat. So they'll be, I think it'll be pretty neat.
So you say no water, no septic.
Nope.
Only electricity.
Yep.
Will it be heated or cooled?
No. Schoolhouse and the train station are the same. There's no water in either one of those or septic. They are just displays. People walk through them, and that's it. So they both have electricity in them, obviously, but that is the extent of it.
ADA compliant?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the front door will be ground level.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a back door as well that goes out that is ground level. It won't be an issue in this situation. The schoolhouse, if you've been there, seen it, is a struggle for us. We have a wheelchair lift for that. But the train station is ground level, so people can go right through.
So when you say there's a front door and a back door, I...
The overheads.
Oh. So this is the front doors?
That's a people door, but the big doors will be open.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Front and back?
Back, yes. So people will be able to walk through, front to back, come around the outside, et cetera.
I see. Where do these doors go?
So that's just the main hall. So the ceiling height inside that big door is 13 feet.
Yeah.
And so all the displays will be in there. People will walk in those doors, and the displays will be inside for them to see.
My question is, how do you open doors?
Oh, they're swingers.
Oh, they'll swing open?
They're swing open.
So they'll stick out?
Yes.
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 On the sides of both windows?
Yes.
I see.
Yeah. We toyed with a bunch of ideas there. If we did slide the doors, they'd cover the windows.
Yeah.
We didn't want to do an overhead because it wouldn't have been logical back then, and it wasn't going to lend to the look. So swingers are difficult, but that's what makes the most sense in this situation.
So you don't need fire sprinklers at all, just for safety?
No, because it's, there's no place to gather inside. It's just a walk-through.
I got you.
Yeah.
What color is the metal roof? Just out of curiosity.
I think we've settled on galvanized like we did on the train station, silver. The other option was black, and I don't know that they're going there. I think they're going to stay with the galvanized color. And I believe the siding, they've been back and forth on the siding. There wasn't a lot of color back in that day. So earth tone brown was one of the colors that we saw. Stamford Village was brown. My gut is that it was used motor oil, but that was just my guess from back in the day. You know, everybody said, why don't we paint it red? And I don't know that it makes sense, to be perfectly honest. I don't know that red would have been a color back then.
It would have been a color, but I think most of the equipment is bright, and you want to set that off with a bland or color in the building, I would think.
So I think they're looking at like charcoal brown somewhere in that area, I think.
Okay. I only suggest it would be brackets on the tower, but that's just an embellishment.
Okay.
Because usually, those sorts of things would have some sort of decor development around the overhang.
A little plain.
Yeah, and not so much on the building, I don't think you need it, but on the tower it'd be nice. Even just a pair on each side, something like that.
Did you see in any of your research where there were bells in towers or outside where?
So, yes, there were the handhelds that, you know, if there was a fire, somebody could come up and ring that bell. And I'm not saying that we won't find something. We'd like to find something antique if we could find it to match that. So the guys at the museum obviously have a lot of background in that stuff and see those things. So we're on the lookout for something like that. We also have some, somebody had some antique lights for the inside of the building that will hang from the ceiling that might have been from that era. So we're going to stay as close as we can to what it would look like.
Who's the president for the windows? That's the one thing that strikes me as, you know, a little off the era.
I think from looking through books, that was the only light they had, really. So there was a lot of glass and a couple that we did save. And I think my architect used his judgment on the transoms. I'm not sold on them, but they're in there, and they do let natural light in. So that's where that came from.
They might be more, if they were against the top of the door frame and matched the door width rather than being free floating.
Oh, right at the top of the door?
Yeah, because that's the way transom windows usually worked. So you frame them inside the door frame, and they match the door height, and they provide the same amount of light, and I think they'd look a little more consistently, what history usually uses.
Okay.
I would agree. Looks like they tried to put a header over the door, which probably isn't necessary to be that low. It could be above the transom if they moved them down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one detail that just strikes me as maybe just not quite in the character of the building.
It's an easy fix.
Yeah. And I see you have, on both sides, you have a louver and the tower.
Yep.
This in the rear is an access door, what, to get large objects into the top?
Yeah, so that's attic storage up there.
Yes.
So we put louvers in, and we're going to actually construct those. I think the guys that are building the building are going to construct those so that we have access to it. And we wanted to match the look of the louvers that were in the tower.
What about moving the air out of there? So in other words, I see you've got louvers in the towers, but the rest of the thing, that's a large, high, it's a 10-inch roof. That's a lot of area under a metal roof, heat rising. Would you think about some way to exhaust the heat from the peak area, which is probably going to build up? And most people are going to be here in the summertime. It's not cool.
No. We can look at it. I'm not that concerned with it for the six days that we're going to be there. And the doors open downstairs. It's, I don't think it's that big of an issue, but we could obviously put a fan upstairs behind the louver and move air out of there if we had to.
I don't think much of anything's accurate condition at the fair, except the building. Well, not even the buildings, you know?
No. No, because the doors stay open, and what's the point?
Yeah, it's like a breezeway, you know?
Now, the horticulture building has heat and air conditioning, and fair week, I make sure we turn the main breaker off to that because ultimately, somebody's going to see that thermostat and turn it on, and I don't need it for no good reason, so.
Any other questions?
That's good.
That's a good idea.
We have a motion to approve the construction of the antique firehouse in Museum Village at the fair.
I'll make that motion.
Would that be with the recommendation on the transoms above or no?
Is it okay if we make that as a recommendation of approval?
I'd like to ask the architect if he had a reason for spreading them. I'm not opposed to moving them if he doesn't have a problem with that design.
Why don't we just leave it as an option?
Leave it as an option.
Okay. But I will ask the question.
Well, second to motion, Jeff?
Both in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So listen, I got one thing I'll just share with you. I have another project that we're working on. Mr. Grominsky is not ready yet. He should be shortly. But I made five copies of what we're planning to do, and I'll leave one for each of you. The 4H entrance, where the milkshake booth is, underneath the maple trees. We are having a problem getting patrons through that entrance and get them off the road and out of traffic because it's only an 11-foot-wide sidewalk where they stand to line up. So we've been working two years on a design for that, and most of it is because that is the only entrance on the fairgrounds that is not black. And the ADA requirement here is difficult.
It's a hill coming up.
It's difficult. We've tried every concept of switchbacks and anything you can think of, you get up that hill and meet the code. And this is where we ended up after two years. And it is a project that we would like to proceed with to meet the ADA code and get people out of traffic and give them a place to queue up to get in. So we're a couple of weeks away, maybe a month away. I think Mark is working on this. There is a septic involved in that one, and I think he's working on that in stormwater. And once he has that together, we will apply for being in front of you. But I'll just drop that with you so that you can review it at your leisure. It's not 100% yet, but we're getting closer.
Milkshakes are one of my favorite things. A milkshake's one of my favorite things at the fair.
Yes.
So lower your arrow, Jen.
Here?
No, that's the welcome sign. Over. No. Where that last building is in the corner there. Milkshakes under. You're almost there. Nope. Scroll down, over.
Stop.
Here.
There. Yes, that's the 4H cafeteria. And currently, this is where we are. And obviously, here, there's a lot of maple trees that line that sidewalk. We have lost three in the last two years. One of them fell over and took his buddy out, and the other one we took out because it was hollow, and it was a safety issue. We will have to remove those trees to do this project, and I will be replacing those. The proposal is with trees, not twigs. Okay? But that's for another day. I just wanted to give you something to look at.
Andy, I think it's important to note that we built this new gate entrance to the fairgrounds, and although its capacity is a lot more than, many, many times more than the 4H gate, still 50% of the people go through the new gate, 50% go through the old gate, and that's amazing. But it's certainly not accommodating those people properly, so that's what we gave them. Especially on Saturday and Sunday. Pretty crazy.
So I think 80% of the people that come to the fair park in the main parking lot, and that 80% is split 50 and 50/50 between the welcome center at Red Barn and the 4H gate. And the 4H gate, as you can tell, the sidewalk, like I said, is 11 feet wide. You can't get enough people out of the roadway to line up there. So this helps that. It also helps the handicapped accessibility because we're currently not meeting that accessibility. We're way over the 5%. But it's been that way forever, so it's grandfathered in. But to do what we want to do, we obviously have to meet the code, and that's the plan here. So there's ramps and flat spots, and that's where we're at. Okay?
Good.
So yeah, thanks, everybody. Mary, Chris?
Thank you.
Have a good holiday. Have a great holiday, Lou. All right. We're having a discussion of the next thing, Jeff Moen.
Yep.
There he is.
Sure, please. Thank you.
Both of you. Thank you very much.
So reference, we're talking about the tax shop, which is now empty.
Yes.
So what's happening?
Well, that's why I'm here. My goal with all my clients, but with some in particular that can often be problematic, is to try to help be a conduit between a local municipality and a property owner that doesn't always necessarily understand that there are rules and laws and ways of doing things. It means I often get problems with clients, but we usually end up with good results. So right now, well, last week, I met with Ryan and Justin and Ken. We talked about the status of the previously approved site plan and the condition of the work being done by a certain time. And where we landed with Kenny, as I understood it, is that because the way the zoning is, if a building permit application is not taken out within 18 months of site plan approval, then the site plan approval expires. So I guess where I'm trying to get with Jonathan and...
Jeff, could you, I suppose you there. So the approval was granted when? Initially?
The initial was...
I know we extended it for six months in March, right?
Yeah, it was originally in March 15th, 2022. And rather than it being 18 months, it was given for a year, for 12 months. And then we, it was given an additional six months in April of '23, which would have got to its original, or took 18 months, it are law by code.
But it's empty right now.
Correct.
So in October of 2023, it expired.
Right.
So is this moving in there?
Yeah. You know, we're looking, trying to decide what's best for there. When I look at that with the work that I do in land use planning, these represent the gateway business district to the village, and one of the purposes of the gateway business to the village is to introduce people to the village of Reinbeck. And right now, the introduction to the village of Reinbeck is Central Hudson's Transformers and the town, but that's first thing you see, you know, a blown-out restaurant, gas station, and a giant parking lot. And then you get to Coe, which has a nice lawn. So, you know, I would like to propose that we use this as an opportunity to tweak the site plan in such a way, and actually, Ken had me, I thought it was a really good idea, is to, the apron needs to be redone anyway because it don't look against codes. It's unpersonally on the state highway. So to move that south, none of this is bedrawn, it's mostly conceptual, but to move that south, so there's a straight shot of access to where the previously approved parking along the side of the building was. And then in order to completely eliminate any parking from the front of the building, to do a minor subdivision adjustment with the western property line, to move that further west, I believe it would be about 20-ish feet, Frank Mazarello was doing some calculations for us. And then all the parking could be in the back with some supplementary parking on the side. Then potentially also would give you an accessway to Springbrook Parkway, which could help with that flow in the back. And looking at that, it's a plan that makes more sense, I think, for access, especially for the visual front of that. And given some of the things that could go into that building, creating an actual lawn in front of that space that complements the lawn entirely there for Coe. So I think that's kind of where we're looking to go with it.
Yeah, that's good. We tried before the fire came at the diner to try it, redo it in the parking lot. I said, could you make a hole so you could get to the gas station after you have dinner? Go get some gas, not go back out on Route 9. You're trying to have, you know, back rows so you don't have to go back to Route 9 to move from business to business.
Yeah, dude, that's a really good point because like when I'm on those properties and, you know, I'm at, I walk, right? But I watch people go from, you know, getting a slice of pizza at Two Brothers and then going into Coe, and then later leaving Coe and go to the mobile station, and the traffic pattern there is...
It's bad.
It's bad. Yeah. You started to pull out and then come to a stop again to make a turn.
People do not do 30 there. They don't do 30 right past the hospital.
It's so true. I live on 9G, and when my kids were young, the bus stop was on 9G. We were concerned because people were doing 60, 65, and now they're doing 75 and 80 on 9G. It's...
So this is the...
Oh, yeah.
This is the site plan that was approved in March 15th, 2022.
Right, thank you.
You may recall that the original site plan had basically all the parking up here, et cetera. Landscaping was added here, large trees, 24-foot width. Basically, this John Clark is based on suggestions that you had from the original one.
Right.
And you also discovered over the course of several meetings that the septic was here. And John, you ran, here's a two ADA parking spaces. But now, if I understand correctly, what you're saying is you're suggesting to move the entrance south to put all of the parking behind?
He's also suggesting, Jeff, they're going to abandon the site plan, seeking an engineer. I think they're going to try to go back to deconic engineering to have a whole new site plan draft drafted. They're going to come back with a whole new proposal, and...
And I spoke with Andy Didio, who had done this, and he's on board for maybe whatever changes to it.
And you're also going to be proposing another access out to Springbrook?
We'll explore that, right? Because I think it makes sense. I think it's good for the flow.
Yeah, is that property still for sale? The whole property in the back?
Everything is always for sale. That's the motto they make.
Because that's not a good idea to have a cul-de-sac going back to a large property like that in the back. So having two points of access with a connection in between so that have merged the access back to that back property would be a good thing, I think.
Right. And then even if through the design process, the main guest or client entrance comes off of Springbrook Parkway, you still have the direct access off Route 9 for emergency vehicles that they can get pulled in and out, commercial entrance with curbing and everything else.
And would also allow an expansion of the building at the old tax shop property.
Yeah, sure.
Because they can now move forward because the parking would be to the side of the rear.
That's a good point.
So you get a lot more development potential out of that building, and presumably, the next building will be a nicer-looking building, and it'll be closer to the road.
Right. One of the things I love about this building is it has, it's a clear-span building. So everything could come down on the inside. There's nothing structural except for the beams in it. So there's so much opportunity there, right? Potential. So yeah, but I love the idea of even coming to the front and having a real building there.
Yeah. Because the goal in the comprehensive plan and other places was to try to pull that stuff forward and put the parking in the back, reversing the old pattern and changing it around to something that feels like a village gateway.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. And the facade of that building will be incredibly attractive. You saw it.
It's nice inside.
It's very nice inside, yes. Yes.
This line here would be moved for a subdivision?
Correct.
Have you started to talk to DOT about it at all?
I started to talk to them about the intrinsic code because that's in need of repair. We were able to do some minor repairs last year to get through the winter, and that's what I started to hope that. But, you know, I think great if we do both at the same time because that entrance, not only is the pavement terraced, but it's really narrow. So I think improvement there would be beneficial.
And whatever you're planning, wouldn't take down the big tree, would it?
Right, no, that's where we'd go south, right, to the void. And it looks like, again, this is all concept, it looks like we could do all of that work even outside the crown of that tree. it looks like we could do all of that work even outside the crown of that tree.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
And the school, old school buildings in the back are empty.
Right.
School's gone.
And what's behind here is the, that sort of ranch house, right?
Yeah, the greenhouse is just back and to the south a little bit from there.
And that has a driveway to the south of it, that you can connect up with, in theory.
Yes, yeah, potentially, right. Yeah.
Maybe someday they'll actually build something where the diners will have a more complete...
Well, I'll tell you, if I had my way, I'd scoop up all the properties. I mean, the way they wrap around and tie together has a lot of real potential. And as much as, you know, it's a wonderful talking point to have that burned-out building there historically, it'd be nice to have some...
Unfortunately, we don't, the town-village line goes through the parking house. So we own the parking lot, and the town owns the building.
Exactly.
And so, you know, it's, it's, well, so the town has to figure out how they're gonna get a tenant to, and we'll talk about the parking lot.
Yeah.
And making, maybe the new tenant will be willing to make that connection to the mobile station and try to build a back road there to keep people going in and out of Route 9.
Yeah, 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 that's a really neat idea. I believe Andy Didio was involved in some of the work, I think, the due diligence after the fire. And he and I were talking about some of the septic issues there, and then how to resolve some of those.
Right, the major septic problem there.
Yeah.
They should really extend the sewer system out from the hospital out to those properties, and then you could fully develop them.
Yeah.
There is a line.
Yeah, we can see what that is.
There is a line.
Well, it's undersized.
It's already owned, it's undersized, and there's a line.
You can use the same ditch, but you can't use the same pipe.
It looks like they have the water run up there, but there was that, you know, and a sidewalk, of course, all the way to the parking lot of the diner, as far as we could go. Because the UPS mall has a lot of heavy traffic, and that divided entrance there, at the entrance to the, you know, it's hard, am I gonna drop packages off? It's really hell, they're getting in and out of there. And the bank traffic coming around and parking, it's just a really squeezed area there. I just usually go all the way to the back and park against the back wall, and then walk back to UPS, because it's too hard to get in and out of any of those parking spots.
Yeah, and even when you're trying to come out of the lot, you've got somebody in the Springbrook Parkway apron, and somebody in the mall apron, and you're not sure who's gonna go, and then you're both watching traffic and...
And two traps going two ways.
Yeah.
And then out to 230.
Right.
So when do you figure you might be through with the engineering study and the redesign proposal?
I spoke with Andy today. I think one of the, the initial things that I have started pushing and would like to push is the minor subdivision. I think that's kind of key to this. Jonathan's very much on board with that, he asked for the paperwork to start that. So, if we can pin that down, work with Andy to determine what's a good movement amount, right, to get that in there, that'll frame everything. Ideally, if we can get that parking lot completely out of the front, that would be the goal.
So Jeff, you might have to revisit that with Justin, because in order for a subdivision to happen, the property has to have defined use.
Okay, so right now, the use would still be the professional office that was...
No, that expired.
Okay, but that's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use in the gateway business district. But because Unlinked It Tomorrow has been out of there for one calendar year, it reverts back to the zoning district, which is the gateway business district.
But offices are permitted use, right?
I think professional office.
Professional offices, yeah, yeah. So it could remain that as the use, unless the four...
If that's, if that's what you wanna go with with the subdivision.
Right, okay, so we'll name a permitted use. So retail business, oh, that brings up an interesting question, I found two of them here. But one of the permitted uses, I think, most likely stick with professional office, because that's what it is. We don't have a tenant to go in there, so, no, I don't know what to play. But I noticed that daycare, family group, daycare group are permitted uses in the gateway business district today, is that right?
Yep.
The, in the definition section, there's a third definition for just daycare, but it's not listed in Schedule of Use anywhere. So I'm curious where daycare can go, because it is different than a group and family group.
Is there any residential, John?
What?
For daycare, which is strictly daycare.
The definition...
There's daycare family and a daycare family group listed in the use column, but I don't see daycare anywhere.
Yes, and the definition of those two relate to the, like, if you do it in your home?
Right.
Daycare is specifically outside of the homes, if I remember the definition right. There, is that right?
So you got daycare well?
Yeah, family and family group are both...
Daycare center, family and daycare family group. I might have an older version of the code or a newer version of the code. So I have three.
Yeah, yeah, and only the group, the family and family group appear in the Schedule of Use.
Right, not the daycare center.
Daycare center, right.
So it's just not a dwelling unit.
Exactly, right, that's a standalone daycare center. And that came up in sort of looking at what might be possible on one of these parcels, although it doesn't appear in the Schedule of Use, so it, you know, would require determination, I suppose, but...
That's interesting. I think it probably was an oversight.
I know if you don't have the zoning administrator at the town in Clinton, I get to see a municipality that is not riddled with them.
They did a major revision of the code a few years ago to try to clear up the fact that some of the definitions in the back of the book did not mention the descriptions in the front of the book.
Absolutely.
And I guess that one slipped through the cracks.
Yeah, yeah.
We picked it up.
So while everybody's looking at that, I know deadlines haven't been the best of friends for these guys, but I think to keep some order and responsibility, does the board wanna entertain a deadline of March 5th? That if anything isn't submitted, that they need to, they need to return and say why?
I'm not, I think I'm missing why there's a time period at all, right? Because now everything's expired.
I mean, if the property, as long as there's no tenant moving in, it reverts back to any of the uses that are in the gateway business district.
Right.
So, they obviously need time to consult with Deconic Engineering and Andy Didio to do anything. So, I know an engineer can't turn out a whole site plan and propose subdivision. They're gonna have to get a surveyor in to resurvey, to propose for the subdivision if they choose to do both at the same time. I mean, they could choose to do the subdivision first and the site plan elements after.
No, I understand, Bart, we're talking about a completely new approval at this point.
Yes, oh, yeah, this is a completely new...
I mean, that could come in two years from now, right? It doesn't need to be March, it doesn't need to be June, it could be...
The previous one was for an industrial use, or a professional office.
Professional office.
Which was a permitted use, so...
It didn't make anything, they just threw up the plans with models.
I mean, if you guys are comfortable with that, it's just...
I would say, this one has expired, and we're looking for something better.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if a month from now, all of a sudden, new engineers show up, or somebody else shows up, and they just move in because they think they're covered in a professional office, and they're still using the parking lot as is, I don't want any emails.
Nobody can...
Yeah, I have been very, very clear with...
Nobody can move in, I'm totally clear, I guess.
That any use, permitted or otherwise, requires site plan approval, because the use was changed from the non-conforming use.
Yes, right.
So, even if it were to be a retail business, as it was before, non-conforming, it's too late. The use was changed to professional office, and therefore, site plan approval was required.
It's also too late, Co can't move in there.
Right, well, and Co is a service business, which needs special use permit, so Co can't expand into that space either. So I repeat myself a lot, but I, I, I try to hold the line, but I can't...
Is Co still alive?
Yeah, it's actually doing all right.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because the last time I heard, it was...
It had, it had a real struggle, and...
Oh, that's good. So now they can plant the trees out.
Are the trees supposed to go, well, we'll look at that. But what I've suggested...
They were getting water, so I didn't push, but they were supposed to have street trees all in the frontage of that property.
Okay, I'll look into that, yeah, yeah, thanks, John. And, you know, I think what Ryan was saying, it definitely has merit, right? And maybe what I would suggest in line with that is that we come back relatively recently with a concept plan that we can do, even without the engineers. Frank and I can put that together, put something on paper that shows this is what we have in mind. We'll continue with the minor subdivision, get that going, and hopefully approved. And we'd be in front of you for that anyway. And just have, try to have, at least, even if we're only a discussion item on the agenda, check it, so you know that there's progress.
Good.
When you talk about a subdivision, are you talking about doing the parking lot as part of that subdivision, or would you try to look at mine first?
Yeah, I think I'd wanna have a solid understanding of what the use is, to help determine the number of spaces we would need to look at that. And then also the idea if the building were to expand into the front, which is something we hadn't talked about, but I think John's idea about that, so...
Yeah, I would just say a threshold thing is back to that DOT question, for them to at least give a preliminary review of it, just because having done curb cut changes, especially in proximity to other driveways, and some of the considerations that come into effect there with potentially something flipping over and blocking more than one driveway or site distances. You know, before, we went too far approving, or thinking about approving anything there. I really wanna know what the DOT has to say.
Yeah, that's a good point, because we're...
It's a longer process.
Yeah, we're moving further from the mobile driveway, closer to the Co driveway, but the Co driveway also has the mall driveway, of course, to that, so...
Right, you've clustered pretty tightly there.
Yeah, yeah.
This is Route 9, and you wanna know inch by inch what's happening along there.
Yeah, for sure.
Especially since nobody does 30.
Right.
And any room to get in there?
And I think it's just north of there, where the speed limit is 45 going north and 30 going south.
Well, it's 55 all the way, until you like get past the hospital, and they say, welcome to Rhinebeck, and you slow down, you're covered.
Right, right.
Any more questions for us?
Glad you came in, it sounds like you're on the right track.
I hope so, it's always my intention, John. I find things are easier when you just, you know, you have plans to do.
I think John's point about the street trees, though, on Co, is also an important one.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, yeah.
Because, you know, six months ago, there was a promise to get the street trees in on this site, and that didn't happen, right? So, I think we're starting off with some bad faith going into a new approval process.
Yeah, I was wondering where the quote is.
They'll have to wait till spring now, because they'll wait till fall for the ones they do.
I don't know, businesses are eligible, I guess they are. The Tree Commission is working now on the spring planting and trying to find new locations for trees. We leave the trees in front of businesses on...
Yeah, but in this case, it's a required of site plan. I would think that we should spend the public money on...
Other places, okay.
On places that...
But you could check with them, because they do buy trees bare root, and they buy them quite inexpensively, so the trees they plant are somewhere in the neighborhood of like $80 to $110, depending on the species, or at least they were last time I looked.
So even if we do a purchase...
Even if you just buy them, at least, you know, you save some money, maybe you could pay a few more.
And my suggestions is the species that are likely to survive in the current climate change on a road where fumes and trucks are going by, you know?
Some not-napes.
Not-not-napes.
Well, if you wanna play for the future, you might get some palm trees out there.
Yeah.
Palm trees in Rhinebeck.
Or ash trees. Thank you for that.
Coconuts becoming a hazard falling on the road with accidents. Well, thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
See you next year.
We'll see you next year, maybe February, I'm trying to get back.
So we have two things to talk about.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's the... Make a formal motion to not have a meeting on January 2nd.
That's good.
Because we, look at that, like we're 50-page agendas, and a lot of people are still gonna be out of town on vacation, and, you know, things are gonna be spread by close.
They have to back them first.
So, do we, I'll, do we need a formal motion then? I'll make the motion to not have a meeting on January 2nd, 2024. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have the last batch of minutes, and I can't believe we're caught up.
Well, there's one, one set of minutes, thank you, Miranda.
Yeah, so thank you, Miranda, and everybody working on this, because we're caught up, and we're never gonna fall behind again. Famous last words, but everybody's gonna work hard. The guy, Miranda, the guys are gonna, you know, make sure we stay up today, because this is wonderful, that we have this. Listen, you're, you're a member, you know, like Ryan is a member of the board. If you have questions, if somebody says something that I'm sure about it, say, excuse me, could I have a question? What exactly do you mean by that? You can make notes and stuff, so, just to help to get it done. But, great on everybody's part. So, what's the date of the minutes? Is everybody happy with the changes?
So it is the November 21st minutes, here's the draft. The, although, although they initially appeared in red, I don't know what I did, but all this stuff in blue is what Darren proposed, right?
I think with the red line, it's something to do with whoever, whatever the changes are, appear a certain color to you.
Yeah. And that, those little, couple of little items in red are mine. Last thing.
They look good, thank you guys for it.
Thank you, I'm fine with everything.
Good. Motion to approve as amended, the planning board, meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Anything else to talk about before we all go home to wrap present?
I wanna bring one thing up.
Go ahead.
I have 46 Livingston Street, which is the big blue house. The carriage house has a building permit sign on it for replacing the roof with asphalt shingles on the carriage house. Carriage house now is slate, pattern slate. And I just, I can't imagine that we would want...
The brown garage of the blue house.
Yes.
That just was sold.
Where on Livingston?
Big, tall... Tiny, of course, for me.
Paul Johnson's old place.
The Adams Family House?
Yes. Yes.
I thought, I thought what we approved was a restoration, which included kind slate replacement.
That expired.
And that house has been sold, we got a new owner.
There's a new owner. So the special permit, everything that they got approvals for, goes when they go.
Well... And the apartment and the whole, the variance?
Done.
Everything?
Everything is white.
Is it because it outdated, or because it was sold? Because usually permits...
Because it was sold, and they let it expire.
Oh, they let it expire.
Warren applied for a grant from Loeb, and it was turned down, and so they didn't want to go ahead with renovating.
I don't like to throw rocks at New York State, but I don't know who talked them into getting a tax credit from SHPO that's almost like scaling Mount Everest.
It was the federal tax credit that they didn't get.
Yeah, so, I don't know who talked them into it, I don't know why they thought, you know, they'd be a shining torch over somewhere else, but, yeah.
So what's all this about asphalt shingles?
So, I was walking by, and I saw this big stack of asphalt shingles in the backyard of that house. And I walked by, and there's a building permit sign in the window that says, replace carriage house roof with asphalt shingles.
Yes, the new owners came in, the roof's damaged, it has been leaking, and...
Are they taking off the slate? Or are they just doing the top portion?
I think they're just doing the top portion. We can, we can find out, but I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that says they can't.
I was just looking at the law.
Roof materials are not... Are not subject to you guys, and everything that, unfortunately, Shay Dean and Mark went for, went with them when they left.
So you're saying this is in the historic district?
Yes.
And it's a historic asset?
Oh, that garage is very important.
Yeah, so, why wouldn't they have to come with a site plan to us?
It says here...
Maintenance.
It says, no. Major exterior addition, rocks shall include new replacement signings, other changes, significant architectural features as determined by the zoning enforcement officer, but shall not include landscaping paint colors consistent with subsection below roofing material changes. Normal repair maintenance.
Justin and I had a long discussion about it, and he said, I can't, can't drag anyone in when it's clearly in the, in the law.
Sorry, I'm just gonna jump in on this, because that building is quite extraordinary. So there's the this part, which is slate, and then the, so, hi camera. But he has some interesting questions. So there's the this part, which is... So there's the this part, which is slate, we can see from the street. And then is it like, is it flat on top? Like that's a queenian roof?
I think, I think it's flat.
Usually there's a slight pit.
A slight pit. So are they replacing the this part or the this part?
I think this part.
We don't know.
Could we get some clarity on that?
Asphalt wouldn't work.
Asphalt would work on the flat part. If it's, if it's relatively flat, that's going to be a rubber roof territory. So chances are they're planning on the visible part because they have shingles there, not rolled rubber roof. That would be my suspicion, but.
We can try to get some clarity. I don't.
Try to get some clarification.
But I don't know if it.
I mean, I don't think there's anything that we can do about it, but was there any?
Well, there's something you can do about it down the road. When they come in for site plan, you guys.
By then the damage might be done and the slate might be gone.
Well, if they wanted an apartment, then they have to redo it.
But that's, I mean, they, they should be aware of that is the point. Someone should get to them very quickly, very quickly and say, by the way.
Repeat of the common situation.
Yeah, if you, if you ever considered renovating that into an ADU or whatever, it's a historic asset in the historic district.
We could force them to put back the slate, even if.
Still outside of our.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the question is more just, you know, did you and Justin encourage them to keep, to keep the slate? I mean, like.
They were told that that is an historic structure in that street, on that street.
Yeah, and I get that we couldn't require them to do it, Sean, but we owe it to them to say, just, you should be aware that this is a historic asset, a specific historic asset within a historic district, which was previously approved with certain conditions which have now lapsed. Otherwise, you would be subject to them, right? And if you ever think you're going to do anything else with that building, right, you're going to have to get it through the, the planning board as a historic review. And think about that before you start putting those asphalt shingles on their roof, right? Maybe, we don't know who the, who the owners are, but you know, it may influence their decision.
Wouldn't state.
Which is the best we can do right now.
Yeah. Wouldn't state historic tax credits still apply there? There would be juice to change that roof to asphalt. They would, they would definitely be out of.
I don't know if they're even considering applying that. As far as I know, everything was under Shay and Mark's name.
No, I know, but it, that could be a suggestion, right? That you might consider applying for some state historic tax credits, which are fairly easy to get. There are services that will apply for you for 500 bucks and you could potentially have that entire cost.
I mean, I get that you're kind of like doing this, Ryan, but that particular building with that particular roof at that particular intersection is actually extraordinarily important to the historic.
I think it's listed that way in the 78 listing.
And then again in the 19 listing. I mean, the slate roof is specifically called out as part of, in both the house and, and the garage. And I, like, I know, I know what the law says, but.
I can certainly talk to Justin about it and see if there's a path forward and lean on Ken as well. It's just.
I know, there's only so much you can do.
There's only so much the village can use the legal language.
Well, I think the suggestion, my suggestion would be maybe just, you know, mentioning that it was discussed at the planning board. You know, the planning board acknowledges, don't have authority over that, but there was a suggestion that state historic tax credit.
What was communicated to the office was there is damage, significant damage. Every time the rain, the four inches of rain we got, I don't believe there's a tarp anymore. So that four inches of rain all went in that carriage house. So all that damage is continuous. When we had the snow last year, all the snow went in the carriage house. So I don't know what scale you guys are looking at is what is, what is going to be left to preserve if it's left as is, based on all the weather damage.
We're not, we're not talking about that.
Well, yeah, but the point being is, my guess, this is just a guess because we, we have never been in the building, or I haven't.
I've been in it for about two years.
Is that the, the leaking is not coming from the sides, it's coming from the top.
Yes.
Because that's where the, the sides water runs off of, even if there's missing slate and everything. You're not getting substantial leak, leaking from the sides, you're getting it from the top. So we have no problem replacing the top and fixing the leaks. And I looked at at least two sides of that slate and it's not that damaged. There's just about, you know, half a dozen slates, pieces missing that could be repaired. It's not like the thing is falling apart or it's.
I think the back corners, John, I think it's been hit by a tree when there are all those trees in the back there. I believe it was hit by a tree and I, from what Warren, when he represented Shay, this is going back, I think in 2021 or 2022, he noted that there's a hole in that back corner of groups. This is, I believe, on the former Dr. Abis side, all the way in the back, in that back corner.
Well, the point being is they have a whole stack of shingles. They're going to replace the whole roof. If they have one damaged area, they could fix that damaged area a lot easier than tearing all that slate off and putting asphalt in. And what I'm going to suggest is maybe the Historical Society or somebody else write them a letter and say, this is an important asset, you're the new owner, welcome to the village, but you know, we have consistently tried to maintain the historic character of the village and your building is really important and we'd like to have a discussion before you tear off that slate. Maybe that would do something more than, you know, coming from the building department, you're restricted by the code and everything else. Historical Society or somebody else.
Michael is the village historian and that'd be a neutral way of not coming from me, but coming from them that would say this.
If they have shingles there, they're getting ready to work.
Well, the, the building permit was from November 9th and they now have a tarp over the shingles. So my guess is they might be waiting until spring and who knows?
You can't, you can't, it could snow tomorrow. You're not going to start a project like that. Just leave it to.
But at any rate, I would, I would still urge urgency on this.
Yeah, I agree and I think.
Could happen. They could have a nice weekend coming up and they could tear all that slate off and do it in one weekend.
All we know is that they went for a building permit and someone in the village looked at the laws and said, yeah, you can do whatever you want to with that roof without, you know, any further discussion. And I think, I think we deserve, or someone deserves to tell them as a courtesy to them, you should know this, right? It is a historic asset and historic, you know, people are very proud of this. It's a treasure in the village, right? You want to think twice about it or please come talk to us and we'll see if there's something, you know, some other solution, right? And so that they don't come back later and say, well, we didn't know. You know, well, we went and applied for a permit. The guy said, yep, code says you can do it. Here's the permit, you know? It'd be a shame if we lost that asset because it just went through that, you know, without any discussion at all. So what can be done? David, are you suggesting Michael would write something?
I can call, but he's, yeah, I think he's leaving for Ithaca for the holidays. I'll try, I just saw him a few minutes ago at a meeting at Bill Jeffries' place, but I'll try to find him tomorrow, see if he's around.
It'd be a real shame to lose that asset.
This whole house, they, I once, a couple of years ago, watching Tommy put that big slate, like the big slate that looks like slate, but it's way cheaper than slate.
Rubber, yeah.
And it looks exactly like slate. It's much easier to put there.
It looks, it looks close. I mean, it's, it's a decent alternative. It's not perfect. It expands and contracts a lot.
It's not asphalt shingles.
It, it, yeah, it's, it's somewhere between the two for sure.
What I noticed about that slate, it's a very thin slate. You know, most slate is, you know, quarter inch thicker or this looks like very thin stuff. So it's probably high quality slate.
Yeah, it's probably really high quality.
Yeah, because otherwise it wouldn't have lasted this long being as thin as it is.
Especially as vertical as it is. There's a lot of weight on the nails.
Yeah.
And then we owe that owner the courtesy.
Well, if, if Mike Frazier is town historian, village historian, can't write it, is it possible the planning board could write a letter? Or is there somebody else at the, at the, you're awkward because you're in the Historical Society or one of that?
Yeah, that's why I prefer village historian, I don't want to start, and they come before us. Wait a minute, this guy's wearing two hats.
Well, you can write it as Historical Society and Chair of the Planning Board and we can all sign off on it.
Sure. Just to know they were informed.
Yeah.
I mean, we owe it to them. It's a courtesy to them and they, who knows? They might, they might care.
Yes, as, as new owners of the village, they would want to.
We just moved in, we don't want to become farrias into town because we ripped the slate roof off of historic structure, you know?
I mean, Ryan, maybe you could just find out if it is in fact the top part and then either way, we make the suggestion that, you know, you might look into some different incentives and realize it's important. So eventually when the time comes, it'd be nice to have this toolkit at your disposal if it isn't the visible part they're talking about. And if it is, I mean, it just doesn't hurt to lob the suggestion and there's no denying that, you know, we don't have authority over this, but.
I stood pretty far back and I couldn't see the roof on top, so it must be relatively flat and nobody would put asphalt shingles on a roof that's.
It just won't work.
Less than 30% or so.
I lived in a house 40 years ago that was a smaller, but very similar version of that and it had the original slate in a pattern on the, on the mansard roof and the top was metal. And it was about like that and it had, you know, a little, you just pop the hatch and you could go up on it, you know?
If they're maintaining slate roofs last forever, before we moved to Rhinebeck, the house before we came here, that we lived in 27 years, had a Vermont slate roof, was a Norman Tudor, it had an enormous roof area, Vermont slate. And every three or four years, we'd bring a slate guy in, he'd replace it, he'd inspect it, he'd replace a couple of tiles, that's it. As long as you keep up with it, it lasts forever.
It's indestructible and a tree falls on it.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Can you, do you want to talk to Ken tomorrow? You want?
Can you try to get Ken or Justin on the line?
See if you can get Justin on the line, I could talk to them. Just tell them what we talked about and I could talk to them. He can call me and I can say, you know, what's your understanding, what they're going to do over there? And then we could talk, Michael will try to come up with something. But I think he's leaving for Christmas tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, I can't imagine anything that's going to get done until after the first and it's going to be harder weather to be doing roofing.
Yeah.
So, but I, I still think a letter should go out somehow from somebody.
From somebody, aye.
I watched Aunt Amish guy's roof in a snowstorm in December, so it's like they want it.
Asphalt shingles, they don't work.
They just got asphalt shingles nailed up down at the end of a mulberry, they rushed like crazy to get that roof on.
Yeah.
And they're just putting Tyvek on the stickle house, so they're, they're putting it on today. So they're, they used wood, put a roof in wood for the signing, no, no green wood, no high tech stuff, just wood.
Yeah.
And Tyvek, it's like school. It's a historic house, yes, old school, historic building, even though it's new.
Just a couple of really quick things. So I did send that folder, a Dropbox invite out to everybody. So there's a shared village planning board dash shared folder that everyone should have gotten an invite to. And, oh, I corrected my typo and it's not village log, but in there, there's that index that Jeff had created of all the different applications, so you can search by applicant or address.
I didn't see that.
Okay, I'll, I'll reset it. Okay, sometimes those invites go to spam too, sometimes on Dropbox, but you're all invited to it, so you can just save to there or especially use the.
Oh, you have all these plans. That's good. I've been saving the plans as they come in, but you know, I miss some of them.
Yeah. Justin's index is really good in, in real time too. If you need to see the last of somebody before us and then find those minutes, you can just backtrack through his index.
Yeah, I'm almost, I'm, I'm working my way back on that applicant. Here we go. Yeah, the applicant from this. And because it's a spreadsheet, it can be sorted by planning board meeting day or by, you know, the street and the number or the applicant. And this way, that's how I found out that we did actually nine meetings with 810 Chestnut. We did a lot of meetings with Unlimited Tomorrow. But this is how we can.
That's really helpful.
If you have any questions as to how many times we, yeah, we get a lot with that Dakota Mazurali one, so. We do, we do a lot of work here.
And then the only other quick thing I had was, Ryan, so when I went to continuing education, they had said something and I didn't quite understand what they're talking about, that it's not enough to just do your continuing education. The, the village would have to take some sort of action at the town board level to accept the hours or something along those lines, you know?
I didn't, just trying to keep track of them.
Just keep track of them. All right, so they had just said like, it's up to you to make sure your, your towns and villages, you know, taking action on these, otherwise they don't actually count as continuing education. So I was, everyone was sort of surprised.
I don't know what that means.
I didn't think so. You've never done that. You've never done that before. I don't know what they meant by that.
Neither do I. I mean, I could call the county and ask her what she meant by it, but.
The continuing education rule is totally up to the village board, you know, or the town board, each municipality, that they can say, yeah, what we really want this, we insist on this or, you know, well, we're not, you have to see a couple of them occasionally or if X number, 10 or 15 years go by, you don't have to go to them anymore. It's very, very flexible, whatever the village board wants to do, there are no state rules that govern what people should or shouldn't be doing.
Is the minimum hour required?
Yes, but you know, it doesn't, the American waived that or not.
We haven't waived that, you know, just to be clear. Just to be clear, the village board has not waived that, that recommended requirement.
I'll see if I can track down what the statement was just out of curiosity, but.
This is from the county or is this from the state?
This was the, the woman from the county and she said, just, you know, realize that you have to bring these back to your municipality and they have to, you know, just accept the hours or acknowledge the hours formally for them to count. So I can see if I can call her or look it up.
So possibly that means if certain municipalities only require county seminars and hours because not all, all counties offer what Dutchess County offers. Like Warren County, Montgomery County, I highly doubt their planning federation does what, what they do. So everything falls back on the state. We're regulated by the state, by the Department of State.
And the state does offer some Zoom classes.
Not as many as the county, but yes.
Not as many as the county, but you could take the Zoom classes if you.
The way the city of Beacon does it is before every meeting, they have meetings once a month, once a month, 12 times a year, they have a half an hour session, training session for a half an hour before every meeting.
Well, it's hard to get.
I usually run them. I have to come up with a topic. Now, a lot of times it's discussion of something that some other entity in the city is doing. So it's showing, you know, what the Main Street Advisory Committee has come up with in terms of recommendations or something like that. It's not like some abstract subject.
Pre-COVID, we were bringing people in, working with Michael Sibley and Melanie to Pre-COVID, we were bringing people in, working with Michael Schimmel and Melanie to get, you know, whether to have all these people have to go somewhere, bring a speaker to town hall and then we all attended. And then we sent Miranda, I mean, Martina, a note that said, you know, so and so, so and so, and so and so, we're at the meeting. And that made it easier because most of these things about have a pertinence to town and village. And, uh, other people could come too, the building department, I do come and listen to the lectures as well. So I should, I should talk, I just saw Melanie a few minutes ago. I should talk to her about that, that we did that before COVID, we should get seminars back, that it'll be more efficient than always people driving down to Millbrook, you know, um, to go to these classes, um, to bring a speaker here.
That's why Beacon did it the way they, because they're way down, you know, so.
That's far away.
It was really hard to convince people to go from Beacon up to the Farm and Home Center or whatever. So that's the way they did it then, you know?
And Pace, you can, you can bring people in from Pace's law to help do some of these too.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if they paid them, because it was usually county speakers that, that Poughkeepsie sent out to go to various Ms. Powell's and lecture. They have no problem doing that.
That's great.
Um, um, I'll, I'll make a note to talk to Melanie. I mean, I just saw a minute ago, but I don't know if I can, but I'll talk to her and see if we can combine some training classes for the spring on topics that, you know, they can bring a speaker in and we can have a seminar at, uh, across the street, it'd be nice.
A couple of administrative things. Uh, you have, you now have a third alternate. Um, his name is Brian Walker. He's an architect here in town. He sat on the red planning board, town planning board for like seven or eight years, um, before moving here. So now you've got Brian, you've got Josh Seagar and you've got Jim Dalton.
So I should get planning on getting sick more often.
I know, right, there you go. Um, also Gary and I had a conversation with David about this yesterday, but, um, and I sent an email out right before you started your meeting. But Gary has changed up the way that the liaisons are doing their work. Um, instead of having them specific to a department, they're now, they've changed, he, he's changed it so we're now specific to like a subjects area. So Vanessa remains environmental, Rick is transitioning from highway to complete streets, um, which you'll, it's part of the comp plan and stuff. Um, John, because of his experience with Duchess County and Poughkeepsie is transitioning to, uh, communications and technology. And I'm being pulled away from this department and being put in charge of land use. Which as far as I can understand, puts me more in charge of forests and fewer of the trees. And as far as I can also understand, it's going to make me busier, so that's super exciting. But in terms of kind of like staff things, that'll be more Ken's responsibility. I'm still, of course, your person for the board, I'll come to as many of these meetings as I can. But I'm now being asked to pay attention to Grassmere and Locust Hill, remain paying attention to Six Mulberry, anything sort of having to do with large development in the village or one in the town that's nearby. Anything that we could hook up with sidewalks, anything that requires water or sewer from our system. Uh, comp plan work. And then of course, once the comp plan is done, the change of the zoning code.
Is that all?
Yeah, so that's it. I'm really hoping that with this change, I'll get fewer emails from residents demanding enforcement and stuff, but I don't know if that's going to happen. So that's my, that's my thing. I love coming to these meetings, I came to these meetings even before I began, I joined the board, so.
We've had begging our representatives over the last 15 years to come to the meetings. And you're one of the few that actually comes to most of our meetings and we have appreciated that tremendously.
My pleasure, I really do enjoy it. I find out things about, you know, slate roofs getting destroyed, so that's fun.
You know, the rumor is, we believe that, um, the 15 acres on the Crossmore Hill have been sold. I was working with Herman Teigen at the library the other day, but that's, that's.
Who was the real estate agent on that? Do you know? Do you know who the real estate agent was on that?
Yeah.
Staley?
Nick. I told him, I, a year and a half ago, I was walking around the village and Nick ran into me and said, oh, we were trying to sell the 50 acres. We hear the village board wants townhouses. I said, what are you talking about? I said, we, the village board, we don't want or not want anything, we want whatever's in the code. You want to build a mansion with a tennis court and a pool and 15 acres, that's okay. You want to build six, you know, two acre houses? I don't know what the actual codes are, you gotta talk to Ken. You want to build 20 townhouses, you got, you got, uh.
It's wet there.
Board of Health, you got, a million, there's no water, I, I thought there was water there, Ryan said there isn't water there. Need wells, you need, um.
There's no water out that far?
Yeah.
It doesn't go up that hill.
It doesn't go up that hill?
No, so you gotta look. You're on 308, you start going up the hill and there's that house on your left, that's where it stops.
Wow.
And there's only two houses at the bottom of the hill and there's wilderness, you get to the top. And so they have to put wells, seven, and there's some wetlands in there.
Is this the 14 acres like right behind Crossmore?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like almost entirely a wetland.
A lot of wetlands.
I'm not sure that it's a designated wetland, I think.
There's federal wetlands there, but.
It's.
Anything with Army Corps engineers, unless you're digging a mine or a gravel pit, they're not gonna.
But it's a house with no basements in it. I, I don't, I said, Nick, you gotta talk to Ken, you gotta talk to Gary, you gotta talk to the Board of Health. You can't do, you can't come in with a subdivision for six, eight, 10, 12 parcels doing something until you've gotten all your homework done. But how are you going to do this? It has to be studies about, that's a very quiet street. And now, you know, when I, we always run or walk facing traffic, oh wait, that's the city, I see the car coming. I look at him, he sees me and he goes over the yellow line. But I don't walk up that hill and my subjects, it's a blind hill when they come over. So I walk on the other side till I get to the top of the hill.
Yeah.
And then I'll cross over before I get down to 308, but you know, so.
It's definitely wet back there, but I don't think it's a federal, federally designated wetland. And under the new Supreme Court ruling, it might not be.
That thing?
Yes. Because somebody went in with a brush hog in the spring and like, you know, plowed a path, a grass path into the place. I never walked in there, but obviously to bring people in to show it, so I don't know. So someday we may be seeing somebody, but they have a lot of homework to do before they get to us.
Yeah.
But that'll be, could be a big subdivision, it might be, I bought it, I want to build a house.
More than likely it's the second one. Because that's the pattern out in that way, you know, out towards Wyandotte, because people buy big lots and put big houses.
That's right. And then there's no, no subdivision, no nothing, dig a well.
One drive.
Put in your tennis court, put in your swimming pool, you know? Put a koi pond in the wetlands, I don't know, but you know, and there's nothing, you know, easy to, so who knows? I don't think the land was like a million and million and a half, you know, some people were like, no, get the 15 acres, he's building a village, whatever. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Washington.
How's that for that?
Two seconds.
Robert got to it first, yeah.
Have a great Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year. Everybody will see you in the new year.